We have a regular city council meeting for November eighteen, twenty twenty five.
Mom, here.
Mallory.
Here.
Brandon.
Here.
Darling.
Here.
Benwyn.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Um.
Please stand up Chinese.
This is to the line of United States of America. Between public and private standards, one nation under God, indivisible, in a single state.
I will look up a couple of comments for agenda items only. If you have a panel having an agenda item, please stand, state your name.
You want me to go to the podium or where?
Podium, please. Okay, I am recording and if you don't, it's four hours, minutes. Yeah, can I? Thank you.
All right, I know it's a little bit. Yeah, pretty busy. Good evening, Councilor, my name is, uh, Wake Canal. I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate that my FOIA appeal is being reviewed publicly and tonight. Transparency matters to me big time. And the value of the council taking the time to handle this process in an open and accountable way. Before I continue, I want to briefly clarify something for the record. At the previous meeting, it was mentioned that I had a case pending. I want to respectfully state that my case is currently filed in the Eastern District of Michigan in federal court. I want to respectfully state that my case is currently being looked at by many different entities, including federal, state, and local. The FOIA appeal that I submitted to this council is directly related to that ongoing matter. Because of this, it's especially important to me that the record tonight is clear, accurate, and fully aligned with Michigan law. I also want to know that I submitted that exact same FOIA request to the Michigan State Police. They responded promptly, provided a complete and proper itemization breakdown, and fulfilled the request in full accordance with Michigan FOIA statute. Their response was clear, timely, and aligned with everything that I just stated. I mention this only because I provided I provided the city with the exact same, uh, FOIA. The same request was handled under the state, which sets statutory standards for this body itself. With respect to my appeal, the basis straightforward. The initial misclassification of my request, the lack of, the lack of proper itemization fee breakdown, and delay that did not align with statutory timelines. The goal is not to argue with you at this point. I just can't believe where I'm at now. There are already detailed, there's already detailed writing to the process documented accurately in handelance with the handling with this accordance in Michigan FOIA requirements and responsibilities. They are outlined clearly. They are outlined clearly. Again, I wanted to be clear that I'm not here to create conflict. Honestly, I'm only here because I needed an officer to send an email. That's it. I'm not here to point fingers. I'm simply here to document this process, follow the law as it's written, and make sure the record is complete for any future reviews, whether administrative, judicial, or otherwise. In closing, justice delayed is justice denied.
Are there any other comments? All right, I will close this course with your thoughts. We're going to the agenda and receive the final communications.
I will interrupt the agenda and receive final communications.
I will second it, but I'd like to make an amendment to your agenda. Um, I was on vacation, so I'm not exactly sure if this happened, but I would like to appoint Adam Bedman for one year mayor pro. For, that's a general business nine. Sorry.
So you'd like to add that?
Yeah, so like an. Like my.
If you agree and you do.
And then my motion to approve your agenda and receive inquiry, all communications with the addition um, item nine E, appointing Adam Bedman as mayor.
And then I will. Okay, any discussion, comments? Okay. All in favor? Aye, opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, thank you. Motion passed. We have six approval in the primary meetings. Uh, from October twenty eight, twenty twenty five. I'll make a motion to accept the prime meeting minutes of October twenty eight, twenty two. Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Martin, seconded by Councilman Ormsby to approve the regular city council meetings of October twenty eight, twenty twenty five as presented. Comments, discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed. I'm staying. I'm staying here. Okay, but neither one of you were here? I remember, okay, thank you. Motion passed. Uh, we have the fire and police, October, we're works. Does anybody have any? Anyone there?
Yeah, I just like to thank them for their good work and all they're doing for our Michigan showing up for like three groups for these.
Okay, thank you very much. Number eight, bills and dispersments we have for the month of October twenty twenty five. Does anyone have any questions? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm gonna give a motion on that first. Make a motion to accept the bills and dispersment for the month of October twenty twenty five. Do you have a second?
Second.
A motion by Councilman Martin, seconded by Councilman Bedman to approve the bills and dispersments for the month of October twenty twenty five at the amount of one million, two hundred and five thousand fifty-four dollars, fifty-eight cents. Any questions?
I would like to know why we are still using Rayman against. It's gotten to the point where it's all, um, three hundred thousand dollars that we have spent on that the last two years. And, uh, we need big treasure. We have this. Treasure, and we don't know why. We need them, especially Dawn. It's been done. I guess if I had treasure, you'd make right acceleration. I feel like this question's been answered multiple times unless.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, it could have lasted two years and been over probably three and a half years. Um, and also the audit's not done just by the audit process. Casey's working on that right now, so the facts were inaccurate.
Now, we're still using them. It was supposed to be for a quantity period of time. That's what I was.
Any other questions about bills and dispersments?
Yeah, why does it need three phones?
Is that a item number on here?
Yes, here it is. You're not meant by this. Income amounts to six hundred dollars a month. Also, I. But it says they have three phones. So for those four.
If you appoint me to the right location, I could probably give you more information.
One, three, nine, four, C D. Comes up to. Cell phone D D A, cell phone, cell phone. I see one hundred D D A. Seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars for any other phone ordering.
Um, let's see, I have one. There's a number with the police department. Jason's got one, Dom got one. Uh, the director of D P W's got one, and that director of the shift, uh, person for D P W. One of the plant operators always has one. Uh, so there's quite a few cell phones under there, so it's just one phone.
And, um, I see you don't have an itemized list for being on financial, which I asked for one. And you stated that you didn't have enough to train. So if you need me to, I will bring in a paper so that we can have those reports.
Um, under, uh, E L I N Financial, uh, we've told you before, you're more than welcome to come in and see that bill uh, and look at that. Uh, so once again, I'm making that offer for the third or fourth time. Uh, but under charges under there are, uh, Michigan Financial Association, uh, Casey went to a conference there on phone counteracts, volunteer, uh, event for B, uh, D D A. Uh, there's hotels for, uh, Officer Voder here who went to some training. Uh, there was uniform supplies for the police department. Uh, but again, if you want that breakdown, you're more than welcome to come in and schedule a meeting with myself or Casey. I'm glad to show you those documents.
Why do I have to come in? Why can't I just?
Um, because I think it would be best if you came in so you could look at it. Is there, you'd have to pull them and everything else, right? So thank you.
Any questions on these bills in this respect?
Yeah, the payment to Grace Larsen's five thousand dollars is that per week or from, it's a monthly paycheck?
On.
Longwood.
Oh, five thousand dollars.
Correct.
Frank, on the contract, yeah.
We approved it about a year ago.
Well, I think we did it for three years, and I think we got a year left.
Yep.
So you voted on that?
That would include and she pays for it as well, I would assume.
Yeah, she is a third, like a third of my contractor, so and who won't stop up, not what's looking, it'll be paid for it is for her insurance, her her vehicle, her, yes, her. Um, she's a pool, everything that she has to provide as what her.
Thousand per year?
I could look, look at it. I know it's not these, it's about like forty-one, so.
It's in the, sorry, it's forty.
She has to pay that stuff, that's.
Correct.
She does.
She's independent contractor.
Yeah, you don't, you can, you can kind of fix them through her.
Those are fantastic jobs, so that's true.
She works very hard and she is absolutely a cemetery asset, and I don't think anybody could just come in and do that job.
Well, I'm not questioning for a bill.
Oh, no, I'm just. No, I'm just thinking long to brag about.
Anything else? Okay, roll call, please.
Martin.
Yes.
Benwyn.
Yes.
Armski. Darling. Uh, yes. Mallory.
Yes.
Brandon.
Yes.
Okay. Fast, we have a, it's not exempt from P A. We're like five two, M C L, one five, that one five. Five, that five, six, three, publicly funded health insurance contribution act, year twenty twenty six. I'll make that motion to consider exemption, publicly funded health insurance contribution act for the year twenty twenty six.
I'll say, okay.
We have a motion by Councilman Martin, seconded by Councilwoman Darling to accept the recommendation of option three, which is exemption option regarding P A number one five two, M C L, one five, that five, six, three in publicly funded health insurance contribution act of the year twenty twenty six. Any questions?
Do this every year. Kind of one of those routine, we almost forgot, and I apologize, so, but, yeah, do this every year.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Uh, yes. Mallory.
Yes.
Brandon.
Yes.
Darling. Yes. Benwyn.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Armski.
Nine B, consideration of cemetery rates. I'd like to make a motion to consider even cemetery rates.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Martin, seconded by Councilman Bedman to approve presented fee schedule, Pine Hill Cemetery. So if you have any questions on the fee schedule.
Why do we need to do this?
Just to keep up with the rates of other cemeteries. Um, when they compare a few, um, cemetery's of the area, um, for example, Mackinac, oh, the Village of Mackinac City, their, their things are a little but they do have a, the mileage for professional care, so that definitely they'll, they'll keep up their cemetery. Um, and also compare us to Greenwood Cemetery and the Tawski and the Toronto Land Museum Cemetery. And our rates are still, for the most part, on most of the items significantly than a lot of municipal care. Of course, it will be a little expensive compared to other municipalities, but I think, I think we still have a pretty great rate schedule. Uh, like, for example, uh, reclamation burial is one seventy-five for us with this proposed rate, which commonly are more common these days. That is what people tend to uh, do instead of a body burial. And we're at one seventy-five, whereas Toronto is at two forty and Greenwood at three fifty. So we're still a pretty good rate. Well, you know, being reasonable for the resident of the city. And first, we do have the non-resident rate, which goes for the non-residents. Uh, the county of whoever pays, uh, to have instrument in the cemetery that's a non-resident. Don't take that. Just about the inclusion.
With every fee schedule that we have, we update them on the name of places. And that's only true because other than that, we have fees in the past. When I first got here, like the ice cream, fees didn't change for ten years. Our utility rates didn't change for ten years, and you wonder why we get behind, so we're trying to keep up and we're trying to ease into where we need to be and fit in that pack. And we're going to do that with all fees, and we have been doing it for the last, uh, three and a half years, trying to get us up to where we need to be. So only good, being good stewards of the public.
Dan, that brings me to a question. Could we, instead of letting ten years go by again, because of cost of living, I think this part, cost of living, goes up off more than those ten years. We should look at.
We do it annually, uh, and the interesting thing, we did that with, uh, if you remember, maybe then before you were on council, with water and sewer fees, we had an automatic adjustment based on uh, an, an inflationary number that we felt comfortable with. Uh, so that it just automatically adjusts, but it's good for us to revisit these, look at these, is there certain fees? Wow, you know, we, we weren't charging our employees, we're charging too much. So there's, you know, we, we, we kind of, we've done that really nice, the ice cream part, almost there. And it was good for all the organizations involved as we kind of stem into it. So instead of paying a little bit, a little bit more every year, that was flatline, and now we want to go to where it's supposed to be in this big jump. So we don't, we don't want to do that because that's not good for anyone.
Gradual better than.
Yes.
Any other questions?
No, it just seems like we're raising rates on everything and we have five counts that really didn't need to be passed again, just sharing. People are already struggling in town and you just keep increasing every single thing. And it's how, where us people might not get in here.
The revenues earned from these rates go into the cemetery.
Yeah.
So really, this is the upkeep of the cemetery costs have risen and it's something that needs to be done.
For example, Gracie's contract, it was thirty-something thousand. Uh, and then when she came back, she, since maybe all's running out, right? And I came back and I, and I think it was about eight, nine thousand dollars more of a jump, but she was froze at that same rank for like five, six years.
She had been the same rate for twice.
Yeah, so, so with that being said, again, we, we have to pay, it's a self, that, there should be a self of funding um, program at the cemetery. It should pay for itself. So right now, we still put a certain amount of money in there every year from the general fund. So we got a little by little streak or taken out of the general fund. That's, that's, it's a, it's a stain on its own. That's not, so we're trying to bring in more funds so that we, we don't have to keep robbing, you know, shifting money from the general fund and then.
And not involved by. If they were residents of the city, I can get a parcel for that, the three hundred and twenty-five dollars, that's one to me. We may agree there to the end of time.
So the, uh, the special care is our, our one-time upfront fee. So like if you are purchasing a parcel, the three twenty-five and the one seventy-five.
And there's only a finite amount of land in the cemetery, so I think for a seven hundred dollar fee, and they're good hundreds of years, I mean.
At least you actually do have, uh, deeds from the nineteen hundreds that are in use of this family generations of well, family, has family plot, so you are being used.
And we will move to start in the next few years, looking to acquire additional. So, yeah, there's one, you have to make sure that we are putting more, we're in that, again, in general fund money to do that if that's something that council was tired, so just keep that in mind.
Mallory.
Yes.
Brandon.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Armski.
Yes.
Benwyn.
Yes.
Darling.
Now.
Uh, yes.
Okay. Motion passed. We have nine C, Freedom of Information Act deal. Just. Somebody have anything they want to start off with?
Well, these papers weren't much help that was in the act because there weren't dates in since the John, and it was just. To look at and to figure out.
Well, I would like to make, I'd like to make a motion to deny the.
We may do that. Thank you, motion.
That's my motion.
Wait a second. Counselor. I have a motion by Councilman Bedman, seconded by Councilman Ormsby to deny the motion on this session.
All right, I'd like to tell everyone why. So yeah, it, it's been a lot of reading lately, watching FOIAs come to go back and forth. Um, seeing both sides try and sort it out with each other. But in the version we were provided in the packet, um, we were given a ten-point list of all the things that you know, that Mr. Canal feels is wrong with the FOIA and I, I am up for going through some. So the first bullet points says that there was a failure to justify the unreasonably high cost. And basis for that is on the six-page FOIA form in box two. There's a section that says up at the top, this fee is being charged because failure to do so would result in a reasonably high cost to the city that are excessive and beyond the normal or usual amount of those services compared to the city's usual FOIA requests because of the nature of the request in this particular instance specifically. And so in FOIA, it talks about how you should base your fees based on, to a degree, how often you're regularly filling out FOIAs because the taxpayers pay for Alyssa and the city staff to do a job, and while transparency is important to everybody, when FOIAs are coming in large FOIAs asking for documents from multiple departments and from multiple formats and for a long period of time, that can really get expensive, and then it takes away from their ability to do the day job. And so Alyssa, I have a question for you. How much time do you normally spend on FOIAs when we don't have them coming in all the time? Typical week, how much time does it spend without FOIAs?
Um, I don't, I don't get FOIAs too often. Um, but the way that I do get, hey, don't really take me too much time. Uh, I would say most of the time, twenty to twenty-five minutes to fulfill them or track down the information that would be needed to fulfill them.
At what point, um, some FOIAs are more complex than others, some are real simple. I need whatever, you know, oh, I have that, I'll save to my desktop. Here you go, it takes five seconds. At what timeframe do you know it's time to start the bill?
Uh, our policy states that if it takes over fifteen minutes, um, that you shouldn't begin charging for a FOIA request and that the time increments are to be in favor of the requister. So let's say if it did take me twenty minutes, typically it is of, back to round, down to that fifteen-minute increment. So that's typically. Well.
And on the detailed estimation, it predicts that it will take a hundred eighty minutes to locate all the stuff requested in this FOIA. How did, how did you guys come up with a hundred eighty minutes?
Um, well, I worked with Administrative Assistant Temple to get this FOIA, um, itemization sheet done. And she and I were discussing about what exactly that she has to through and the labor of the cost to locate all of the information provided. Um, there was three hundred and fifty-four pages of information and that did take a significant amount of time for the staff to find and locate those exact records. Um, and then when it came to the separating of the exempt from the non-exempt, um, we gave about three minutes per page uh, in reading and to read and redact if needed. Uh, so then we would take that time and break it down within those three hundred and fifty-four pages.
Would it be possible, no matter the outcome of tonight's vote, to redish the itemization with a quick blurt here on number two about how because this would take a hundred eighty minutes, that exceeds our policy of fifteen minutes and in a normal week, we don't respond to a lot of FOIAs that this is outside of the norm for us and that justifies our charging for it.
So just basically.
Something to that effect.
Yeah, so basically saying about perfroming the policy.
All right, that was number one. Number two, um, claims no detailed itemization. While we just had a discussion about how portion of it could be clarified, like, these six pages are the detailed itemization. You don't need to say a ton about it. It says in number three that it, it would take time to read and possibly redact personnel, or sorry, personal information from three hundred and fifty-four pages. We have an estimate, and, um, we know how much the hourly wage is. Which then brings us to item three. It says that there has to be proof of who the lowest-paid law-finding employee is. But I don't see where the Freedom of Information Act, it says we have to say this person is doing it. Earlier to address fee waiver requests, um, that, yes, in the back here, there was a portion waiver, public interest. Did Mr. Canal ask for a public interest waiver in his initial FOIA? I can't recall, it's out of my memory.
I believe, I believe so. I'm just going to try and find it. It's in my papers here. Um, it does say, um, in this first initial, I've got descent on the twenty-ninth. Um, at the bottom, it says free to review the electronic fee. And the total cost, I see twenty-five dollars, to provide a fee for processing. And, but then at the very twelve. The total cost received twenty-five dollars, please provide a fee for processing and but then at the very twelve. I would, I guess, you consider eight one, um, it says I request a way to a reduction of fees under MCL fifteen point two three four three. Because disclosure of these characters isn't the public interest and not.
And that is not defined in FOIA, what I can see is what a public interest disclosure is or is not. Um. What what I've learned in my day job, because I issue FOIAs through word. Is that the public interest waiver would be like, let's say, a hundred citizens showed up, they're all inquiring on a particular topic, we just already know what. We think it's so important for the public to know, I will release. Without charging a fee, or sometimes if a newspaper is asking for something, again, we feel that having it. Published is worthy of releasing without a fee. But in this case, as we pointed out in the public comment, there is case not filed before. This isn't for the public interest, it is for his court case, and so. The the statute is clear, we may. Waive the fees, but we we don't have to.
Um. The only, uh.
Yeah, jump in maybe.
I I remember seeing about thought pregnant with. Times they've stayed in the way or something like that.
That is if you're using a contractor compiler. Yeah.
And I will will know, um, I don't know if this was caught in the initial. For the preface and duplicating month. Um, and Mister Canal did request it electronically, so that could be taken off. Seven dollars in full since if he's not receiving a physical paper code. And he's getting it via electronically. And we could take the copying duplication cost, so. Aologies regarding, you know. That there.
And and that actually kind of ties into what I was going to say about. Um, some of these other viewpoints, which was. What the six-page document is given, it's it's an estimate. And you're right, if he doesn't use paper, then there's no copying charge. We estimate how much time it would take for redaction, it could take us, could take more. I haven't seen the documents, I don't know how much redaction there is, but. Someone's got to sit there and redact whether digitally or on paper, they might have to. Call a city attorney for guidance, they might need to consult with you, we don't know much time that might take, but if it's less than what's quoted. You would fill in actual time and if it was more, you'd fill in actual time, right?
So so you're saying if if you're asking if there was more, how?
So I'm saying.
More than the estimate?
Then because this is just an estimate, whatever the time actually ends up being, whether it's more or less, is what you in the end charge, right?
Correct. So like it's saying it was, uh, if it was more, then we would work until what we have. Like, for example, if there was more forward. In fact, we've met the capacity goals, we've worked the hours, quote with. And reduction and search and so on. Um, it's all at one rate, so let's be compiled it into a estimation of. Seventeen hours, but in reality, it's going to take eighteen or nineteen hours and. What we would have to do is we would have to reach out to Mister Canal and let him know, or anyone for that matter, for any FOIA. Like. You know, just wanted to. Inform you that this is taking more time than originally estimated, we're giving to you in your estimation, we are. Guessing it'll take us two more hours in order to finish what we have to finish. And the requester can choose to. Yes, that's fine, I'll pay that, or no, and they get what they need if that makes sense, right?
I follow you, and and yeah, he did the math, I checked math, three hundred and fifty-four pages. At seventeen and a half-ish hours comes out roughly three minutes per page. And given the time needed to read, possibly consult, do the redacting. It is just an estimate. Um, he says that speculative redaction labor is not permitted, it is because it's an estimate. It may not take that long. It may take longer. Um, he says that there needs to be a reduction because it was late, can you share a little bit less about timelines?
Um, it it was three, um. I just see the first email, um, I know there was just a little bit confusion, I think. Of the Mister Canal. Let me know that it was sent to a wrong email, um, however, the email. Was I believe like FOIA should wouldn't work.
Yeah.
Which doesn't exist and, um, the LCs do state to send the FOIAs to their friend or I. Um. So on October twenty-ninth, which is a Wednesday, about two thirty-three. Um, he's got FOIA request. Um, however, it did not include his. View at the address, he he. Um, he's still number, but didn't give any compress. Which in FOIA law, uh, if the the address is not given. Uh, it is not a legitimate FOIA request, it's not completed, um. Then there was a follow-up email on Thursday, October thirtieth, at about four nineteen AM, I had gotten one from Mister Canal. And he noted that he didn't provide his full contact information. Uh, and he said it was listed below, um. But it was just his phone number. And without his USPS mailing address. Um, but then later that day at three forty-four PM, he did in fact send the fake. Address of his home address, so then it would be considered, uh. I think the FOIA request on September thirtieth. Um, so the email FOIAs, they are considered received the next business day. Which would be Friday, October thirty-first. And then, um, the day after it it receives, then the five-day business, the five, the five-day. Business days that starts for responding to the FOIA completely. Uh, would start the following day after it's received. But Friday, the thirty-first was this Friday, so it wouldn't count on Saturday or Sunday, it would be on Monday, the first five days. Can be unlawful. So then that would be the third. So then I would have until Sunday to respond. Which we we, that's when we respond with the, uh. Detail cost authorization.
Okay. Why is it? You have to have a signature for it to be considered valid at cost?
I I don't think that's it, I don't, I I have not seen anything in the FOIA law regarding the detail cost authorization that needs to be signed. Uh, I did look, I I know this is. An older form from the, um, excuse me, uh. From the Michigan Cities Association from eleven fifteen, I did look at their website and it does have, you can see that. And there's no signatures, um, spot on the detail consideration.
I'll really admit, I just crisscrossed the questions in my mind, I won't begin to ask about addresses.
Oh, okay.
Signature is next, I couldn't look. I apologize. Why do you, like, the state law says be considered valid, a mailing address has to be, why do you think that is?
If I'm not mistaken, there was a blog, I'll be honest, but I think there was a. The huge FOIA that went on to multiple, like, this is a whole entire state. In twenty twenty, where the two hundred two home requests have requested. A great amount of, let me, election FOIA items and. A bunch of the coates in Michigan were freaking out because all it said was from like Emily or Emma or something like that. And they have no contact, no, no last name, no phone number, no email and. I believe the Bureau was getting a bunch of information or contacting a bunch of panicked clerks, like. We need to contact this person and we have no idea how because our five-day. Response window is starting, you know, soon, what do we do? So I believe that's why the law was rewritten to include a. You know, what it does have now, which is a lay of contact, school poll, first last name. Contact of a phone number or an email, um. And the full USPS compliant address, which can include a PO box or your.
Now with the signatures, I corrected the order.
Okay.
The law does say, I see on there, that it doesn't deny, because we see the way the person denied, but you did an issue. Okay, mathematical inflation and unreasonable estimates, um, I think that the timeframe's estimated. At the wages. That would be paid for the lowest paid people who can handle each of those organs is. I think it's too simple. Unverified copy and mailing costs, um. If I don't know what he's referring to, it's a hundred, so. With all that combined, that's why I make the motion to deny the appeal. Happy to provide the documents, but our our city, our city workers work really hard. And, uh. When people are performing FOIAs for their legal discovery. And it is an excessive work that is beyond the norm.
I would like to thank Adam for his input. Most of it, I was. Overwhelmed or over my head. So thank you, Adam. Explain why.
Yes.
Burns.
So sad, even when we denying. The whole thing, everything that's in character.
It's gonna be out there, outspoken.
We're denying that. Maybe the appeal. The appeal, yeah. He can get the documents, he just needs to pay the fees and and we didn't know the reason. Why for the labor cost to locate. And I believe, like, you could reissue this with that, and well.
Yeah, I could, um, I could reissue it with the waiver law. Labor cost to locate referencing the policy and, um. Since Mister Canal has requested for it to be sent electronically, we can also, uh. Technically reduce the fee or just take on for the, uh, the seven dollars and four cents, which would be for a. Physical paper.
Um. Yeah, can I just get all all that in there, please?
So, I'm I'm so sorry, so we are, um. So the determination, written basis for time for city determination. And maybe one. What would we technically want to?
But we don't have to take any action at this point, that. But you may, so we can just, right, is that answer the question?
So we, so we have the, just be, um, we do have to provide a response on. Within the tenders and stays of the council's determination of what they are doing, what it's at a feel or the decision of set of feel. So, you know, we did a lot of talking about it today, made the motion to deny, um. The appeal.
I would say exactly what he's denying.
And then it's the, it's, and then it does say, I do have to respond to them for the FOIA law. Uh, the written basis for the city's determination, so as of the law.
Okay. I'd like to modify my motion. It's requested relief, he noted three things, the waiver of all fees and deposits. Immediate release of all requested records without charge. And written confirmation that this appeal has been placed before the city council, we don't need to address that, it's here, yeah. But really what he's asking us to do is to waive all fees. I make a motion to deny waiving all fees. However. Reissue the cost itemization with section two. Filled out and the seven dollars and four cents removed.
Okay.
Anything else we say has.
Think you want to read?
Second one.
Yeah.
Should I get a hold of all that things?
Yes, just one sec. Sorry, I forgot. Um. Brenda.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Edwin.
Yes.
Armsby.
Yes.
Darling.
Todd, yes. Mallory.
Yes. Okay, we have nine. E D. Turned here, you, oh, I'm sorry, I stepped right over that, nine D. Okay, which will contain season. Do you want to address that?
Yes. Uh, when we passed the original ordinance, uh, we had the season closing at the end, um. Well. Uh, however, there is a late season archery. Summer first, the end of the summer. Um, so I have a like, Michigan Council. Uh, but we did have a modification in there, um, to follow the seasons to allow us to hunt. Um, until the end of December, so that they're giving permission to allow those that are registered hunters right now. Um, to hunt until the end of this event.
Almost everything the same.
Everything the same, the only thing we do is just extend season a month.
I would like to make a motion to extend the archery hunting season within the city limits till the end of summer, summer three, four, seven.
Correct.
I second.
We have a motion by Councilman Martin, second by Councilman Brenda. To extend the archery hunting season as stated. That's. This one.
We have fourteen does and three bucks at this moment, which is, again, like I always say. If those fourteen does, they're gonna at least have one fun, if not two funs next year. Um, it's 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 doing what we intended and I figured with another month. Uh, a lot of people will go out and they're like gun hunting right now, and then that month of December, they'll come back and they will hunt. At that point, they're, you know, I don't want to get my buck from the, and it's me, we're just shooting does. Hopefully we can get that out in the twenties. That's my goal.
I have to say that's one. Pretty good for the first time.
We've had no problems, we had one here jump property lines into somebody else's. Uh, we happen to know who, I I actually happen to know who the who the person was, um, we're placing on the survey were to. These these compliance and the, do you mind if X Y Z hunters goes? The deer is, we we leave within so many yards of your, in your property, and she said that the officer went with. That person, then they did not have a problem, so. So no, no issues, uh, to the point. I'm not done with, by the way, so.
There's a potential for next year to, you know, this number, even at right where it's at. It's forty-one deer. And so it'll. It'll stabilize. I'd say, is that the right word?
They're still not running around, Jake.
Right. Well, one thing is the like. Uh, cross street, we always gonna see seventy-nine deer a night. And right now, last, uh, probably higher days. Benson. And it's one of the days they stick. You know, they step into the cover. And, uh, so, so that will also deepen. As much city penetration.
Well, the rust one, I know, we don't want to chase him. This is what most of the car tracks. Let's get it done, that's all.
Can I get a hold of all that, please? Are you ready?
Yep, okay, Martin.
Yes.
Edwin.
Yes.
Armsby.
Yes.
Darling.
No.
Todd, yes. Mallory.
Yes.
Brandon.
Yes.
All right, city managers, I'm sorry, I need, I want to. Uh, this is for Anna Bedman, Mayor.
I'd like to make a motion to officially appoint Pat Bedman, Mayor of town, the one mayor.
A motion by. Councilman Martin, second by Councilman Dad. To. I stay.
I only accept, yeah, my rec shows up at every.
That's why. Okay, the whole base.
Brando.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Ben.
Same.
Barnesby.
Yes.
Darling.
No.
Todd, yes. Mallory.
Yes. All right, city managers report, please.
Um, tell me who Oscar Anderson was. Up in the Chaboyan history. First acting city manager. Chaboyan.
Okay.
Wasn't here.
Vincent Trippy.
Okay.
Was it real?
Yeah.
Yeah. The first acting city manager. And he served for a total of one, two, three, four months.
So.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, what I'm gonna do right now, and here it's just as well. Where you got one do? Okay, perfect. Hey, um. There've been over and over and over, and like Mayor and I have had a conversation, and we're, we're kinda getting frustrated of. Having to repeat ourselves, and I wish Mr. Canal was still here on this. Um. Our charter says that the city manager needs to live in the city. Okay? However, state law takes precedence over local law. A charter, we as a city are given the ability to have a charter by the state. Specifically outline the state constitution. However, law cannot conflict with state law. Okay? So what I'm gonna read here is it's the residency of public employees act two twelve of nineteen ninety nine. Uh, we've had a number of council people lately and a number of. Uh, citizens who keep bringing this up and it's frustrating me, frustrating the council. So we're putting it on the record. Councilman Darling has a copy of this in her hand, uh, so not fully aware of it. And that, uh, to restrict certain government entities from requiring individuals to reside within certain geographic areas or specified distances. Or trinkets from their place of employment as a condition of employment or promotion. Act two twelve, hoping you're taking this down. Nineteen ninety nine, good definitions. As used in this act. Public employer means county, town, county, city, city. Um, authority, school district, or other political subdivisions of the state and includes any other entity jointly created by two or more employers. It also mentions school district, which Adam is well aware of. Next part of this residency requirements of public employees. Except as provided in subsection two. A public employer shall not require by collective bargaining agreement or otherwise. City managers under an agreement.
Between me and council.
Okay, so, so so far we're good on this. That a person reside within a specific geographic area within a specific distance. For, from his per place of employment. As a condition of employment or promotion by a public employer. So what did it say? Says the city can't make me live in the city limits. Okay? Two, which they said subsection two, here's the, here's the exemption. Subsection one does not prohibit a public employer from requiring by collective bargaining agreement or otherwise. Which would be my contract, that person reside within a specific distance from the nearest boundary of the public employer. However, the specified distance shall be twenty miles or. Another specified distance greater than twenty miles. Okay? So if they put it in my contract. They could only put it in there, they said they, they would have to put in this says, hey, I can, I can be twenty miles away or twenty five miles away. But they would have to put it in my con, which is that, is that my contract?
No, and it was not from the.
Alright. So based on this. Even if it was required that I live within twenty miles, which I do. Uh, we measured it, so we can either take it from my house and move on from it's fourteen miles. If you go by the crew life, it's twelve miles from the edge of the city where I live. I am perfectly in compliance with state law. Instead law takes trump the charter. So hopefully, Mr. Canal and other people listen to your tape that you have there. There's also the tape here, and hopefully it sunk in with Ms. uh, Councilwoman Darling. That I am in full compliance. This was provided to me when I was hired.
Um, they did.
Let me attest to this, the former city manager can attest to this. I spent months trying to look for a house in Chaboyan. I wanted to live in Chaboyan. Couldn't find one, and something came up and I was able to secure housing in another location. Interesting enough. The list I have here of all the city managers. Okay? Prior to me was Mr. Tom Eustace, who did not live in the city his entire tenure. Right? Prior to that was Dale Stewart. Lived in apartment over here, but his family lived downstate and his mailing address and everything was downstate. Better that was an individual by name, cutting off which is last name. Uh, George Orth Howard. Was the former city manager of Toshki. Right? So the city manager of Chaboyan has not lived within the city limits. Since two thousand and ten. Interesting enough, for a short period there, everybody knows Earl Jones. He serves as a, a interim city manager for actually two weeks, less than two weeks. Actually, it was two weeks. And prior to that, there was a city manager by the name of Scott McNeil. Scott started in ninety two. Law changed in ninety nine. And when Scott retired in two thousand and ten, since that point in time. No city manager has lived within the, you know, school bound. So I'm kinda confused on why it's such an issue and it keeps being made an issue for me now. Council's aware, everybody's aware, you handle them as saying, so. I think that's hopefully included after. I don't know, more exciting thing. Me, well, if I have to give you a copy of the law, so if you wanna do a great article on it, it'd be happy to be interviewed. Thank you. Alright, children's trail, uh, the paving is done. Uh, they're working on the edges to kinda. Make sure that with the paving, it's not, water's not gonna undercut, it's not gonna cause any damage into it. Uh, so we're, we're working on that. The equipment and materials are down at the river for the fishing piers. We're waiting on, if you remember, on the fishing pier, there's this big steel pylon. Underneath the supports that handle leader out. Uh, we're waiting on those and as soon as those come, we can get going. We're hoping to start soon because of the issue of. We get going in the spring, then we have salmon and we have trout and we have walleye. And they all have spawning seasons and E and R will not let us play around with spawning grounds during that time. Arts council meeting, uh, November sixth, we had a good meeting with the arts council regarding their grants. Uh, their instant flexibility and their one large grant that we may be able to jointly address some issues that need to be taken care of. And finding building, uh, the menu went well, um, and we each left with our own folder. Uh, and I'm, I'm working on mine, and I know they're working on theirs, and I guess get a copy of the grant. Uh, the master plan and zoning code update, um. These documents are scheduled to meet the deadlines by MISHDA, which is at January, uh, twenty, uh, twenty six. But I think we're in good shape. I need, the problem is, it's, it's, it's. Problem that me, I gotta read, read all those and make sure all the information is accurate. Before we put those out, so I'll be next couple of weeks doing, locking myself in my office, wait a bit to do that. Both those documents will require public hearings. Um, not only public hearings, but they will also require council approval. Um, I suggest we will probably get those documents to you as soon as possible because yes, there is a lot of reading to it. Um, and they are drastically different from the old. So it's not like you can hold one up and hold the other one up. It's a, this line changed and that line changed. No, it's, it's totally different. Uh, stuff in the definitions and things, so it's gonna require some detailed analysis on your part as well as my part. Um. Land use maps are completed. Again, I gotta review those to make sure, so that there were any omissions or changes in that. Um, and then December fifth.
Nine AM.
Nine AM, uh, there's a meeting to go over the master plan. Um, and so that will occur here. So anybody wanna come and provide any input? Uh, mainly the board is going to be working with the consultants. Uh, but I think there'll be times where some, you know, we'll have opportunities for people to chime in. Uh, east side brush site, um. Uh, since we opened the dump back up, uh, we had a hundred and twenty two people use the dump from October fourth through November twelfth. Uh, we turned away a good deal of non-residents and businesses who are not happy. Uh, we started getting, well, we've been doing this for years and I wanted to say here's your invoice. Um, but, uh, so stop that. We're still working on a permanent solution. We do like having a person there to open the gate. Check IDs and things like that. So I think we're gonna stick with that. Uh, thank you for allowing me to extend the archery season. You have the numbers. Uh, again, no major issues. I don't wanna point that out because everybody was. Casting doomsday, doomsday stuff on us that, you know, remember we had a deer running around with it. Looking like handcushes with arrows sticking out on the hallways and things. So. So as far so good, um, we have put out an advertisement for the police chief, uh. I think it's been out for the last two weeks. I kinda said when I went over there today and some of the stuff was off off. I was hoping that maybe he would reconsider or something, but, uh, he's got stuff on its way up. Uh, another thing we had some discussion about, and I believe there was a letter from the citizens about was our rec master plan. About a year and a half ago, I sought feedback from that rec, the rec committee on the condition of our existing parks. Uh, we also asked them for suggestions for improvements. Um, Dale Rigger provided me a stack of those, which was kind of the basis for this plan we've got. I started working on the plan and I'll admit it was extremely slow, uh, and I won't even say steady. Uh, it just wasn't, I didn't have the time to do it. I went and got a quote from HRC to do it for us as a consultant and a quote was for forty thousand dollars. And at that point I was like, okay, I gotta try to find my unions. Um, I met with Nemco who was doing our master plan and our zoning code. Uh, they had some money left over for another grant. Um, and they said if we could move fast enough. That they could use that money to pay for their staff to help us with it. Um, after some discussion with a few council people and the mayor, um, I told Nemco we're interested. Um, to save time because we already had a group that was working on planning, zoning code and a master plan. Regular master plan. So they did all this legwork, they were familiar with the data, they were familiar with everything. We decided to use the same group. Um, so then they were working on three projects at once and, uh. I, I think very skilled group of people, a lot of them are experienced as planners. Uh, rec, uh, they were professionals, but I think we had a good group to do that. Um. So when getting that grant, we have to have it done by. Uh, January two, uh, again, same thing with the other ones. Um, so Nem, uh, Nemco jumped in right away, uh, worked with us, uh, we provided, we did. We had a survey we put out for the master plan that had rec questions. Then we put out a separate survey for just recreation questions. Uh, then we had a. Meeting where we invited various stakeholders from like soccer association, the baseball association, um. Football, uh, a bunch of other organizations, the, the rail, uh, the rails trails folks. Um, we invited everybody to come in, uh, and they were here for that meeting. Um, and we had a detailed discussion about the parks, every park we went through, what was wrong with it? What we like to see there, what improvements. So we did that. So we gathered a ton of public input. Um, there'll be another public hearing on January thirteenth. Uh, on that plan, um, and there will often be a public review comment period for thirty days starting December tenth. Um, this will allow us to complete the plan by the end of January. Which then puts us eligible for E and R money for this fiscal year, uh. As long as we can get the children's trail done. There's a lot of times if you have an outstanding grant, you haven't finished. They're not reluctant to give you money. So, are in good position there. Uh, the new water tower. Uh, we're flushing and testing that water tower this week. Uh, so if you go by, it's water leaking, we're probably flushing it. We're hoping it's not a leak at the new water tower. Uh, Jason's goal is to open it at, uh, the tower by, for operation by the end of January. Uh, so hopefully everything goes well, there's no problems. That should be good to go. And then the lease at the chamber, um, they've had a lease for a number of years, that lease is up. Here at the end of this, no, end of December, so I'll be working with that on a new lease. And then, uh, FEMA has provided us through the state of Michigan, a grant agreement, doesn't have any numbers in it. Uh, but they provided us a grant agreement with all the terms and everything else. I've reviewed, tightened off on it. Um, so it looks like we're moving forward, probably gonna get some money. The question is how much money? And then there's a lot of things that I'm going to have to. A bid out. So like if you see tree branches hanging over a road, I'm gonna have to put out a question, pose with the tree companies. I'm gonna submit their bid, and then once we hear from FEMA, hey, look, we're gonna give you this money. Then, then I'm gonna put that out because I, I don't wanna have companies spend the time for now, don't bid for them for. Everything else, and then we don't put the money, or we get very little money. So once I know how much we got, then I can put it out, uh, to bid for that, and that includes the ditches, any trees that are dead. Uh, that were like basically destroyed by the storm, and then also there may be. Some money for the little black river water. And there, I believe I'm done. The city. You're just to require. Be looking at the city. When you get that, you get a very small pool, choose one. That, you know, why on man, but with that, a number of years ago. That policy was.
Yes, yeah, they are all the same.
Exactly. Something like twenty nine five.
Yeah. But Thompson, you're still have their city.
For sure. Don't accept, for sure.
Um, I have a question for you. Parks and Rec, you've talked about Michigan. Are, why were they not invited? Or why did they not even know about the meeting that we had on November sixth because I. You know, different people have commented to me, they're the one that did the plan. But they didn't even know about the meeting, so why not? Why weren't they invited to the meeting?
Um, I believe members of that group were invited to the meeting. Dave was there.
He's not, he's a liaison, he's not a member.
He is a member of.
Johnny and Dale.
Johnny and Dale were invited to the meeting.
Yeah, I saw him.
Dick Cartmill was, uh, there at the meeting?
That's not Dick.
Yes, Dick Cartmill is sitting right here at the meeting. So you're saying they weren't, but he was right here.
He knew nothing about it.
So. I think we're getting our.
Well, let, let me ask what, what, what's true, I wanna settle this. Was Dick Cartmill there?
That was a, that was a community meeting, a.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that's the being achieved or it is not there. The meeting she's referring to was a culmination of the master plan, which we all just spoke about recreation. Like you said, we're doing several things in one meeting. So Mary, you're kind of wrong in the sense it was just a Parks and Rec. It was a, all three of things at once. That's why I'm assuming they were not invited.
Council was invited and the planning commissioner was there because of the master plan. Okay, so a different meeting, in public meeting, Dick Cartmill was there. He was invited to that.
Yes.
And so was the planning member. Mark Dieter was there too. At that meeting.
You mean we're not enough?
No, I didn't know about it. No, I didn't know about it.
There were many people, hundreds were, like, we have all finished.
I know I showed up, because you told Mr. Cornell.
We told council to come. We're invited as a council.
On November sixth.
That's a different meeting, Mary.
There's, there've been like four different meetings.
So many meetings.
I'm gonna go forward.
Mom, it's time, do you have a phone call? Please, yes, they need.
Okay.
This, well, those pop comments, we don't make our heads.
We do have one question. I'm looking for meeting for hearts and rec, I know liaison. I assume, look, once, we're looking for characters, by the way. Being a dangerous, no, you're not mentioning.
Resign.
Resign, I'm sorry. Thank you. Uh, so we're definitely looking for one now, and, uh, we will need to meet eventually, I'm assuming after the holidays.
I've thought.
But I'm just a liaison.
It's very important.
Thanks, right? That's all I have for you.
All right, thank you.
CBA has not had any business.
TA work session.
Yeah, worked out some.
For, for the need and. Basically, we call the TA breakdown and what.
Just trying to, and reasons that, uh, who's, who's even want the meetings.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
The trucks are, uh, the, uh, ray of lights, was that discussed?
No, that's sort of part of the, um, promotion committee.
Okay.
Um, which we talked about basically.
We didn't talk about specifically, I was really.
Okay, that's all I.
It's kind of confusing, but imagine it's like. Okay, the council done, we all break up, and we go to different things, right? That's kind of how it does.
Yeah.
It's basically a promotion group meeting.
Not the main, we talked about the organization of the, of the unit as a city.
It was just a work session, it was a, um, traditional meeting.
Thanks. Great. You have your turn.
Thank you.